All righty, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 14th, meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. Madam Clerk, would you care to call roll?
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Tran.
Here.
Councilmember Dovin.
Present.
Councilmember Klaffenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen Pinalosa.
Here.
Mayor Protem Bridigum.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. And whom may I ask to do the honor of the invocation? Patricia, can we ask Patricia to do the invocation, followed by Councilmember Tran to do the pledge of allegiance?
I'd like to ask everybody to please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Heavenly Father, fill us with your grace as we make decisions tonight that might affect us and all those around us, and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the service of humanity and for the benefit of our community. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to bring our light for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, we'll start with presentations. We do have a community spotlight, item 1A.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize Abigail Din, a Garden Grove Unified School District student, for winning a gold medal with the Team USA at the 16th International Dragon Boat Federation, or IDBF, World Dragon Boat Racing Championship in Pattaya, Thailand. So before I ask Abigail to come forward, let's take a brief moment and watch the Team USA in action. Thank you. If I could ask Abigail Din to please come forward and just stand by the podium here. Thank you. A freshman at Lakinta High School, Abigail discovered her passion for dragon boat racing in 2015 when her parents, Vania and Michael Din, introduced her to the sport. Dragon Boat Racing is a high-performance competitive sport with a rich cultural history that dates back to 2,000 years. Crews consisting of paddlers, a drummer, and at the helm, or a steerer, propel long, narrow boats with dragon heads through the water with the rhythmic beat of the drums. This past summer, Abigail was part of the Junior Team USA and competed in the 2023 IDBF World Dragon Boat Racing Championship in Pattaya, Thailand. During the second day of the competition, Abigail participated in the Junior 2,000-K mixed boat races and won the gold medal with Team USA. This incredible feat was due to diligent training and a consistent practice schedule. "I worked out every day and also practiced on a dragon boat every weekend leading up to the competition," said Abigail. When the dragon boat racing may be physically demanding, Abigail is thankful for being part of a tight-knit and caring community that led to this lifelong of friendship. In the future, Abigail hopes to compete in more IDBF World Dragon Boat Racing Championship to continue representing the United States while exploring the world. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Abigail Din with a certificate and a memento of recognition for winning a gold medal with Team USA at the 16th IDBF World Dragon Boat Racing Championship in Pattaya, Thailand. Congratulations.
Fantastic.
Good job. Congratulations to Abigail, and thank you, guys, all for coming. You're welcome to clear out if you like.
She's also a scout.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
And so she's with her troops, they're all right there.
Okay, great, great. I just didn't want to make you feel trapped in here and then have to stay. Sure?
Sure.
Please. Yeah?
Thank you.
Yeah, if you guys want, come on.
Come on in.
Cram in.
Maybe 20, they're 20 years old this month.
Leave, get up here.
You can get another row in front, have two rows, that way you all can fit.
Take the picture of yourself.
The close-up of your nose.
He's a man of the people.
Somebody's going to get cut off here. It's going to be a dad.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good night. Good night, everybody.
Hi, guys, thank you for coming. All righty, we will proceed to oral communications. I do have several cards, starting with Henry M. Torres, Sr.
The Honorable Mayor, my name is Henry M. Torres, Sr. I've lived right here in Garden Grove for 70 years, I'm 70 years old. I'm having nothing but problems with the Garden Grove Police Department, and I bought, I got handouts right here that they will get to you, to my situation. There's two matters here that I need to talk about. One is, I had some homeless guy that tried to kill me on Gilbert and Catella. Luckily, there was two Garden Grove undercover police officers sitting right there, and they stopped it. Now, I get this paperwork, and the person that did it should have got life in prison. He got 90 days. Why? Because of the Garden Grove Police Department, when they wrote this report, it's not a report. They never, they never investigated it, and I'm talking about Detective Cabrera Camara, okay? I know who he is, he knows who I am. Five days after the matter took place, I started talking to him. In this report, it gives fake phone numbers, fake addresses that are not mine, and they're saying it's me, and it's not me. Mr. Cabrera knows where I live. I talk to him on the phone all the time, okay? And I can easily take care of this by calling all the channel people, and 100,000 attorneys will show up and want to take a case. I'm not trying to do that, okay? Secondly, the second matter is with Detective Lucas, okay? And what I have with Mr. Lucas is, is a program with 290s, okay? Which I incurred in 1996, that's over 23 years ago. I'd been calling him, and calling him, and calling him, and calling him, and calling him, he tells me to call him, he tells me to stop by. Well, I live two blocks away from here, and I come over here all the time, and then I get denied going up there because he told me to come in to pick up paperwork. This paperwork right here has nothing to do with Mr. Detective Lucas, okay? He tells me to do one thing, and I do it. Whatever he tells me to do, I do it, okay? I can't get into the police department to get the information he tells me to come get. Why? Because I got denied by the lady downstairs. Her, her name, it starts with a W, I can't pronounce it. She's one of the ladies that works there. She started putting words in my mouth as to what I was doing there, and what I needed, and what I wanted. I said, okay, whatever. Why? Because a lot of times, this situation turns into an argument, and I'm not trying to argue with anybody. Like I said, I'm 70 years old, okay? I'm not stupid, I know what I'm talking about, or I wouldn't be doing it. So, I'm coming to here to somebody will hear me, okay? I don't know what district, who's in where, or what, but I live two blocks away from here, okay? And I'm directing this to the mayor, because that's all I know. And I just need somebody to hear me, that's all. And if I'm denied, I can respect that, okay? And these two officers, the two detectives, are great men, they are, because I've dealt with them. In fact, Lucas got me off the streets, and then, two weeks later, he sends 15 officers to my address. Why? Why? And when they got there, they're looking in my car, and they asked, and I was down a block away from it, my car, and I walked up there, I go, what's going on here? And the detectives, three detectives, and the rest were officers undercover, okay? And just says, is this your vehicle? Yes. And she looked at me, turned around, and all of them just left. Who were they? Why were they there? I can't get no respect. I want to know what they wanted. It took that long. If I could snap my fingers, that's how long the conversation took. Again, nobody's hearing me. Like I said, and I'm directing this now to the city mayor, city manager, manager here, okay? And you know what? I'm not here to blast the police department, okay? I remember the chief of police that was here, Kessler, I know him, okay? He's, he left here, I don't know, 30, 40 years ago, ended up in Riverside County. Whatever, whatever happened, happened, okay? Beyond all that, I love Garden Grove, I love the Garden Grove Police Department, okay? But when something happens to me, hey, I pay my taxes, I've done my dues, I paid my dues, but yet, ain't nobody trying to hear me. And when you read this police report that they wrote up to make me look like a transit, a homeless person, that's not true. And when this situation took place, whoever this guy was, okay? He beat me with a pipe that long, 15 times. I went to the hospital, the records are right here. He busted my rib back here in the back, and I have to have major surgery. But how do I take a report in to anybody that they're saying it wasn't me, meaning the address, meaning where I was from, and I don't know this person? All right, that, that's all I want to say. If I can't hear from anybody, or somebody can't contact me, I will go to the news media. I will bring in 100 attorneys. But that's not me, I'm done.
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, sir. Please, please go ahead.
And I apologize, I don't mean to be rude, or yelling, or, or any of that, or picking out separate people. Thank you very much.
Tina Vo.
Good night, stay safe.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmember, staff, and Garden Grove citizen. My name is Tina Vo, Vo member for Vietnamese National Association Real Estate Professional, which is a nonprofit organization. I'm here to tell you about our upcoming event, Fight Hunger. Councilmember Cindy Tran participated in last year's event in San Jose, making 1,000, 100,000 meals for hungers. This is the first year we do this in Orange County. We will make 30,000 meals, we will give 10,000 to OC Good Bank, the rest will be to others. Thanks to Mr. John Montanges and Councilmember George Bridigum, and Councilmember Cindy Tran for helping us with finding a venue. We would like to invite everyone, kids, students, parents, grandparents, friends, family, coworkers, to come and make some great memories helping our community. There will be team games, contests, entertainment, and free bell necklace for all attendees. The event will be at QD Venue at 7722 Garden Grove Westminster, corner of Beach and Garden Grove. On December 9th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. is for setup. 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. is for packing food, and 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. is for cleaning up, cleaning up. We have couple youth groups and scouts who are ready to sign up on our volunteer page. We would like to invite mayor and councilmembers to be there at our opening ceremony. Please reach out to us at 714-337-1292 for any additional questions or details. Thank you very much for your time and support.
Thank you. Nicholas Diblis.
I haven't started yet, can we start the clock over, please?
Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Jones, members of the council, my name is Nicholas Dibbs, I'm a teacher, I'm a credentialed science teacher, I'm also a credentialed career technical education teacher in water utility operations. I worked for the Department of Water Resources for over eight years, and I've been a teacher since, a credentialed teacher since 1992. I tell students, though, the most important subject is history, so we don't repeat the mistakes of the past. And I'm going to ask the city to, or the council members, to consider a resolution for an upcoming meeting in the near future regarding the situation overseas. What happens overseas can affect us here, and the crisis and war that's been going on since October 7th needs to be addressed, and there are local cities that have weighed in on this. I want to start off and say I'm a member of Jewish Voice for Peace. I stand with my Jewish brothers and sisters who are members of Jewish Voice for Peace, and I want to read a letter that the village of Dariyaseen in Palestine was attacked and massacred on April 9th, 1948, and the very next day, Albert Einstein wrote a letter saying, "When a real and final catastrophe should befall us in Palestine, the first responsible for it would be the British, and the second responsible for it, the terrorist organizations built up from among our own ranks. I'm not willing to see anybody associated with these misled criminal people." He was asked to support the Zionist movement, and he declined, and his letter is still as timely now as it was then. Veterans for Peace, if people go to veteransforpeace, veteransforpeace.org, read the statement that they issued on October 12th, giving an analysis saying that they're the soldiers that have been, "We are former soldiers and allies who know too well the costs of war, the obvious visible wounds, the unseen wounds, et cetera. We oppose all targeting of civilians. We denounce Hamas's attacks on Israeli civilians and deplore Israel's crushing response in Gaza. Over 150 billion of our tax dollars have been provided to Israel with unlimited weaponry and diplomatic cover." So they go on about this and saying the blockade is wrong of Gaza that's been going on since 2002, 2007, and the cycle of violence needs to end. I'm going to play, I urge people to go to democracynow.org to hear the wonderful, the very, the news reports, democracynow.org. This was from yesterday. Sorry, I'm running out of time here. Well, running out of time, so I'll have to play it next time.
This is Democracy Now!, democracynow.org, the War and Peace Report. I'm Amy Goodman. Gaza's two largest hospitals, Ashifa and Al-Quds, have stopped functioning as Gaza's health system collapses under relentless Israeli bombardment.
Okay, so I'll just ask that you please consider a resolution on this to help bring peace and justice. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards we have. Is there anyone else wishing to speak who has not submitted a card? Okay, seeing none, we will close oral communications and go to written communications. We do have one request, 3A.
Item 3A is a consideration of a request from the King Shocks Technology, Inc., for a holiday toy drive, and Ms. Palayo is here to give that report.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. Staff received a written request from King Shocks Technology requesting approval of temporary closure of city streets for a holiday drive on Saturday, December 16, 2023. The proposed event unites the off-road, overland, and outdoor community to collect toy donations that would be delivered to the Children's Hospital of Orange County. Excuse me. The proposed location will require street closures in the business blocks surrounding King Shocks Technology that would begin on Lamson Avenue and Edison Way, heading east on Belgrade Avenue and south on Industry Street. The street closures would be effective from 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Requirements include partnership with local nonprofit organizations in good standing, insurance coverage, street closure approval from the city council, and reimbursement for any direct costs to provide city support. King Shocks Technology has received approval from the Garden Grove Community Foundation to serve as a nonprofit organization to apply for the community permit. The foundation is in good standing with the IRS, sorry, I have got something in my throat. Thank you.
Take your time.
Rarely happens. Sorry about that. All right, so they're in good standing with the IRS and Secretary of State. The proposed street closures have been reviewed by the Police Department Traffic Division and will provide staff support for the closure of city streets during the event. Approval of the proposed holiday toy drive event will not have an impact on the city's general fund. King Shocks Technology will reimburse the city for direct costs associated with police support for this event. The estimated cost for staff support is approximately $3,000, and is expected to be fully reimbursed. Staff is recommending that the city council consider this request for a holiday toy drive on Saturday, December 16th. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Yeah, just, you know, they've been a, kind of a staple over there for a long time. They're really one of the biggest, well-known companies in our city as far as making those parts that they make for the suspensions and all the, you know, so. So anyway, with that being said, I know they give back to the community in lots of ways. This is the first time I think that they've done a toy drive, though, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, that is correct.
And so, you know, for those reasons, I'd be making a motion to approve it.
Second, call the vote. Not working?
Not working? Okay, I'll do it, I'll do oral. Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Tran.
Yes.
Councilmember Dovin.
Aye.
Councilmember Klaffenstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen Pinalosa.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bridigum.
Yes.
And Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, at this time, we will recess to conduct successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you call roll for successor?
Member Bridigum.
Here.
Member Tran.
Here.
Member Dovin.
Present.
Member Klaffenstein.
Here.
Member Nguyen Pinalosa.
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neil.
Here.
And Chair Jones.
Here. All right, we already did oral communications, consent calendar, just 2A, receive and file the minutes, can I get a motion? Call the vote. Are you working?
I'm going to try it. Okay. Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn, and Madam Clerk, are we supposed to go to the Public Finance Authority now, or is that later?
I'm sorry. For the, for the Public Financing Authority, it, it was held in conjunction with the city council public comments, and we, we don't have any additional speakers for this agenda either.
Okay. All right, then we will go back and reconvene city council.
Did you want to hold the Public Financing Authority?
Oh, that's what I was asking you, are we supposed to go to that right now?
Yeah.
Since it doesn't show up on the computer.
I know. That's why I gave everybody a paper copy. We're having, we're having technical difficulties this evening, so we're going to have to do it the old-fashioned way.
Quite all right.
So do we need to just pull 4A and handle that separately, or?
So the public financing items, there's two consent items. Adoption of a resolution, approval of other related documents to authorize the defeasance of the Garden Grove Public Financing Authority and lease revenue bond, Series 2015A, and this is a joint action item with the city council meeting, which is on the consent calendar. And we also have receive and file minutes from the meeting held on October 13th, 2020. It was a while ago. So that is on consent.
Okay, we already had oral communications, so we'll go to those consent items, there are two listed, and I believe, are we taking action on this jointly as city council and Public Finance Authority in one shot? Or do we have to do them separately?
Well, I would, I would do two separate motions, I mean, you can have one, one, you know, consideration for both agencies, but I would take actions separately so that the record can reflect that.
Okay, then first, let's take action as the Public Finance Authority.
Can I move the consent calendar for the, for the authority? 2A and 2B. What, can 4A, I'm sorry.
We're doing 2A, hold on, we're doing 2A and 2B from the Public Finance Authority.
Yeah, and I move that.
Those two together on consent. Okay, we have a motion, a second for that. Call the vote.
All right. Member Tran.
Yes.
Member Dovin.
Aye.
Member.
Unless you take it when you adjourn.
Under consent.
I think we have to finish the authority and then?
Yeah, we need to finish.
Got it, okay, so we can do that separately.
Finish the authority and then you can pick care of it when you come to the council.
Alright, that's, so we'll move on to items for consideration, 3A.
Item 3A is adoption of a resolution to approve the issuance of federally taxed exempt leased revenue bonds or certificates of participation to finance the public safety facility and civic center revitalization project. And Ms. Song should be here very shortly to give the report. And here she comes.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for considering this item before you. This is a resolution authorizing the authority to approve us to issue the bonds to proceed with the civic center revitalization project, as well as a joint item with the City Council to have the city manager to take necessary actions to finance the project. So the civic center revitalization project includes the construction of a 90,000 square feet police department building, a multi-level, level parking structure with 450 spaces, and the construction of a new 2.7 acre civic center park. In September, the City Council directed the staff to continue our effort on this project and move forward with an exclusive negotiation agreement with the selected development team of Edgmore, Clark, and AC Martin for the design and pre-construction work. Since the beginning of October, staff has been working with the developer team on financing strategies. Five options were formulated and discussed, including the general obligation bonds, city-issued lease revenue bonds, conduit lease revenue bonds, certificates of participation, and projects certificate revenue bonds. So all these options were evaluated based on the cost of issuance, time required, as well as the ongoing administrative and reporting needs. Staff also engaged our municipal advisor, Phil Monroe Lab, and City's Bond Council to review these options. Staff along the consultants came to conclusion that, given the city's strong credit rating, sufficient cash position, and aggressive project schedule, as well as the size of the financing and the projected market condition in the spring of 2024, when the bonds are anticipated to be issued, it is most cost-effective to finance the project through debt issued by the city's financing authority. And it would be in the form of either lease revenue bonds or certificates of participation. Staff will work with, to continue to work with the development team to coordinate the timing and the mechanics of the issuance. The resolution before you tonight merely serves two purposes. The first purpose is to authorize the use of the proceeds from the proposed financing to reimburse the city for direct costs incurred prior to the issuance of the debt. The City Council has approved to set aside 17 and a half million to advance the project for a lot of the pre-development work, and much of the costs are directly related to capital improvement and is eligible for tax-exempt debt financing. The approach the city takes to cash fund these works will result in significant cost savings, as well as reducing risks. So with the approval of this resolution, the city will be able to reimburse the cost prior to the bond issuance with the tax-exempt bonds or debt, which will maximize the benefit of having a financing in place. Now, the second purpose of the resolution is to obtain the City Council's direction to work towards accomplishing the proposed financing, including hiring a finance team. The proposed debt will not exceed 140 million, annual debt service is estimated to be approximately 9 million, and this money will be paid from the existing general revenue, including the federal sales tax. It is important to note that the issuance of the proposed debt will not result in additional taxes or fees to our community or taxpayers. So we recommend that the Garden Grove Public Financing Authority adopt the resolution approving the issuance of the federally taxed exempt debt to finance the civic center revitalization project, and for the City Council to direct the city manager to take actions necessary to complete the financing. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions, comments?
I'll move it for approval. Second.
Call the vote?
Member Bridigum?
Yes.
Member Dovin?
Aye.
Member Tran?
Yes.
Member Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Neill?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
And Member Wynn Pinalosa?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Excited to get this ball moving.
Alright, any matters from Public Finance Authority members? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn that and reopen City Council. That takes us on to consent calendar. It's recommended that 4A through 4J be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull any items.
Mayor, 4, item 4E is being pulled for this, from this agenda.
Alright.
It'll be re-agendized at a future meeting.
Okay. So do we have a motion and a second for the balance?
I'll move the balance.
Okay, call the vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Alright, that takes us on to public hearings, item 5A.
Item 5A is adoption of a resolution approving an amendment to the amended and restated agreement with AAA Oil, Inc., doing business as California Fuels and Lubricants. And Ms. Luna Reynosa is here to give the report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and members of the City Council. Tonight's item is a public hearing regarding an agreement between California Fuels and Lubricants, CFL, and the city. There was an original agreement that was approved by the City Council in 2013 and was later amended in 2016, and we refer to it as the 2016 Agreement. There's additional details about those particular agreements in your staff report. In June of this year, we received a formal request from CFL to amend the 2016 Agreement, and the city desires to create and retain jobs within the city of Garden Grove. The city has the ability, under Government Code Section 53083, which is a statewide economic development tool for the purpose of allowing local jurisdictions to induce economic development for the creation and maintenance of jobs. Pursuant to this section, we did publish a summary report, which was made available to the public on the city's website and is attached to your staff report, which outlines the salient terms of the agreement and the public benefit. So this item is required to be a public hearing under that Government Code section. The city and CFL are proposing to amend the 2016 Agreement to further encourage CFL to retain its headquarters and business operations within Garden Grove and increase their investment within the community. CFL was founded in Garden Grove in September of 2004, local homegrown business with only two employees. Today, the company employs approximately 80 employees, doubling their employee count from the 2016 Agreement. CFL's sales have increased by over 350% since 2016, keeping CFL firmly in the top 10 sales tax producers for the city. The proposed amendment to the 2016 Agreement makes two primary changes. One, it increases the sales tax base from 200,000 to 312,000. And two, it estimates, it eliminates the tiered approach established in the 2016 Agreement to a one-tier split of 25% to the city and 75% to CFL. So I noticed in the published staff report, it was mentioned as a 30%, 70% split. That is incorrect. It is correct in all of the attachments in the agreement, and I'm not quite sure about that, but it, I want to be clear for the public and transparency that it is moving to a 25%, 75% split. But the base has increased. If CFL continues to perform status quo, meaning if their sales tax and their sales were to continue as they are today, this new formula actually would generate more sales tax for the city because of the increase to the base. While if they increase their sales as projected, our percentage goes down slightly, because currently it's at the 70%, 30% split, but it becomes a much bigger pie. So while our portion of the pie becomes smaller, we get a bigger piece. So overall, it's a win-win for the city and for CFL. As part of these modifications, CFL would extend the proposed term of the operating covenant by 20 years. So currently, it is set to expire in 2036, and we would move it to 2056. And they would commit to maintaining its business in Garden Grove as its point of sale through June 30th of 2056. CFL has estimated that this amendment will enable them to expand into new markets, invest additional capital dollars in Garden Grove, they're committing to a minimum of an additional $10 million, and hire and retain local employees. They anticipate that their revenues will increase by over 350% due to increasing sales volume made possible by this amendment. Based on their projections, the city would receive approximately 267 million in sales tax revenue through 2056. CFL also projects the addition of approximately 100 new jobs over a 10-year period. New jobs are anticipated to include drivers, dispatchers, logistics office staff, accounting and IT positions. CFL will work closely with the city to prioritize the hiring of Garden Grove residents. The sale of petroleum products is conducted by a limited number of companies in California, all competing for market share. The industry is currently seeing consolidation opportunities. The purpose of the proposed amendment is to induce CFL to remain in Garden Grove through 2056, make significant capital investment of its own funds and its business in order to increase the volume of sales in Garden Grove, and increase employment opportunities in the city. If the anticipated expansion in sales growth occurs as a result of CFL's capital investment, the agreement will result in the generation of significant additional sales tax revenues to the city's general fund, the creation of additional employment opportunities for residents of the city, and long-term maintenance of the site in a first-class condition, and other tangible and intangible benefits to the city. At this point, staff is available to answer any questions you might have, and I would like to mention that CEO of CFL, Ephraim Davalos, is here as well to answer any questions you might have. After that, please open the public hearing and receive any testimony, and then consider the recommendations that are before you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ursula. This is a public hearing item, so any questions or comments of a clarifying nature before we open? Go ahead, George.
Yeah, so I get the whole intent of bringing, you know, I think we all want more jobs in Garden Grove for Garden Grove residents. But what kind of oversight, what does that, does the city provide to, you know, contractually, they're gonna try to hire Garden Grove residents. What kind of oversight is there on that? Is the city actually looking at that? Are we just relying them on their good faith to say, oh, we're gonna try to hire Garden, I mean, what does that look like?
We have the ability to audit their books annually, and we also have the ability to actually hire an auditor to come in and do like a more, a more formal audit as well. So we are required by law every five years to look into it. So there was, after the 2016 Agreement, a five-year report, which is posted to the city's website, that discusses the jobs that they did hire. And so we do do that, and that report is online, and every five years, we will continue to do that. And at the termination of this agreement, we have to hold another public hearing outlining all that has been accomplished or not during the tenure of the agreement.
Is there any teeth? I mean, let's say they decide, oh, we're not gonna hire anyone, we're gonna hire all Anaheim residents. Is there any teeth that the city has for them not hitting a magical number, is it 50% or 20%, whatever that percentage might be? Is there any teeth that the city has if they're not meeting that expectation?
Not on the employment side. Ephraim has talked about wanting to work with the economic development staff as we have workforce ties and programs that we already have, and so working in collaboration to really make sure that we are offering Garden Grove residents the first opportunity at these jobs. At the same time, we don't want to hamstring their ability to hire employees to grow their business. The teeth are more on the end of the sales tax, making sure that Garden Grove is the point of sale, and that we are receiving the base and the share moving forward.
Thank you.
Georgia asked most the question, I was, had the same concern, so, but I want to follow up with, the previous report, does it reflect our intention? Because we won't see another report for, say, five years. I'm going on the track record. Have you looked at that?
Yes, we looked at that previous report. That's where we got the employment numbers to see that they are at 80 employees, where they had start, they doubled their employment number from the 2016 Agreement. And the opportunity that is before CFL today, based on the consolidation that's happening in the industry, is significant. They've already have a couple of those transactions in mind. Their business will grow significantly with the need to hire new employees.
Okay, so the track record looks good, and it doesn't look like there's any changes that we can foresee at this point, and that they will deliver on their promise. And staff is recommending that we vote it up.
Correct.
And we do have some measures to gauge, and they cannot opt out or choose not to maintain this agreement with us. So they have to work it through, they can't just unilaterally opt out, right?
There's clawback language in the agreement, meaning that if they were to leave and not continue to have Garden Grove be the point of sale, they would have to pay back all of the subsidy that has been received and provided to them under the agreement. And then I did want to mention that it was important to staff in analyzing this agreement and proposal that we did not go backwards, that the city maintains at least what it's getting today, and that's why the base increased. And so, again, if, if none of these projections come to fruition, and CFL just continues to perform as they have been, the city is still better off under this new proposed formula.
Great, thank you for your diligence, and I'm comfortable with going forward.
We still have a public hearing to open, so let's be conscientious of that. Any other clarification questions of staff before we open? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Mayor Jones, members of the council, my name is Nicholas Dibbs. Okay, there we are. Obviously, I'm not familiar with this agreement. It's gonna go till 2056, which is a long time. I do have one, a couple of things. One is with the greening of the economy, where we're shifting from petroleum-based energy to, to more in the electrical side, where cars and vehicles are going to be powered either by hydrogen or probably electric, mostly electric, and the governor has, and the legislature is mandating that on vehicles. So I don't know how that figures into this, but anticipating that there may be changes in the demand for petroleum products over the years. In any case, anything that's gonna help the city and bring employment in and increase the taxes, that's great. I do have a question or a suggestion for Ephraim, since he's here, and that is, as a teacher and an educator, we need more opportunities for, both at the high school level and at the college level, to have internships and apprentice programs. So I would encourage him to work with myself and others in the community to, to do, have more opportunities, including job shadowing, apprentice programs, internships for the high school and the college students, so that they can get some, at least some exposure, you know, unpaid, could be some unpaid job shadowing and, and situations where kids, students during the summer break, maybe they get, spend a week or two over there and see what it's like. So that's, that's another point. As far as the financial part, it sounds like the staff has worked that out. It is a long time going all the way to 2056, so I don't know if there's any out, any, any things that, that needs to be considered between now and then, if there's an, if there's an early clause to release or not. But it, it sounds like good from what I hear, and you folks on the council know more about this than I do. So I just want to encourage Ephraim and his staff to do more, to have some apprentice programs and internships for the high school and college kids. And also to factor in the fact that there is a move afoot to reduce reliance on petroleum products because of the pollution into the environment. So whatever, I don't know if they have any plans. It is a long time going all the way to 2056, so I don't know if there's any out, any, any, any things that, that needs to be considered between now and then, if there's an, if there's an early clause to release or not. But it, it sounds like good from what I hear, and you folks on the council know more about this than I do. So I just want to encourage Efren and his staff to do more, to have some apprentice programs and internships for the high school and college kids. And also to factor in the fact that there is a move afoot to reduce reliance on petroleum products because of the pollution into the environment. So whatever, I don't know if they have any plans to put solar panels on their buildings to help reduce the footprint on the environment. That might be another thing that could happen. So combining some solar and technology with their operation to help reduce the reliance on fossil fuel generation. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on 5A? Okay, seeing none, we will, oh, did you want to call Efren up? Or did you just want to, or should I close the public? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Clough today.
I just wanted to, to make a motion. Obviously, this, this agreement was very detail-oriented. I think it's a win all around. This is a legacy business for our city, and I'm very pleased to see that they're going to be continuing to operate in Garden Grove for a long time to come. So again, that's, that's a motion.
All second, but I have a comment.
Go ahead, Cam.
Yeah, thank you. I do want to acknowledge the fact that, you know, we are trying to be greener, et cetera, so forth, but that's not something that's going to happen overnight. I want to highlight this business that is, as it is in my district, and I want to say to the questions about workforce and prioritizing Garden Grove residents, it's something that's at the top of my mind, absolutely, especially if, you know, we're trying to go green, but we obviously, I, I only have a gas vehicle, so we're not there yet. But if we can subsidize that with having Garden Grove local jobs, then that's a win for the city, plus the revenues that this will generate. And I want to say that in my seven years, I've actually only had one conversation with the CEO of the company, and it was very enlightening to hear his humble beginnings and how he started off. But over the last seven years, I've seen him heavily engaged in the community through the activities through the Chamber and the Foundation, and so I trust that, just from observing him over all these years, that his, his best interest does rely in the community of Garden Grove, and that he will ensure that he hires as many people in the city as he can. But I also don't want to bootstrap him to doing that in the event that there's just not people looking to get into that business here in the city. And so I will, will trust that he will make his best effort to do that and really continue to be one of our legacy businesses and bringing in a significant number of revenues for the city, because we do rely on that. And I, with that, I meet this, the second.
Just a quick comment. It will be many years before we're totally, you know, not reliant on fossil fuels, but, you know, a lot of what CFL does, and they've been a longtime community member, very active in the community. CFL has a lot of choices to go anywhere they want to take their business. And as one of the largest sales tax revenue providers of Garden Grove, you know, we want them to be in Garden Grove, especially how involved they are in the community and, and talking about hiring local people and, and just everything they do. So I'm all in favor of this, and it's going to be a win-win-win. You know, keep in mind, a lot of fuels that, you know, driving cars, sure, electric cars, but a lot of our construction equipment, big diesel trucks, there's a lot of diesel fuel. Any tractor, trailer, any construction piece of machinery is run on diesel fuel, and all the backup generators that back up all our phone companies, all our infrastructure right now are, are diesel-powered. And without that, when the power goes down, that's what's going to fire up and keep us going. So it's going to be many years, you know, we got, and I always say, we got to do everything. We got to do it all at the same time. You can't just have, pick an arbitrary date and go all-electric. So the fossil fuel is going to be around for a long time, and we need to support CFL, so I'm all in favor of this.
A quick comment. So the first thing Ursula mentioned, without win-win situation, and that's just the same thing that make me smile, you know, my heart smiling too, because this is one of the top 10, you know, tax generate for our city. You could go anywhere, but then you stay here, and we already hear from the council member that how involved you are with our community. And so when it come to the money, bring it to our city, and also generate tax, I mean, generate job for our city, I'm just so excited about it. So thank you.
Generally, I'm leery of businesses when they're, you know, saying, oh, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that. But this particular business owner is so involved in our community in, in many ways, and, you know, part of the Chamber, you know, I see him at different events here and there, and totally trust that he's going to do the right thing. It's, it's unusual for me to say that about a lot of, but without a doubt, I believe he will. So with that, I'll be supporting this.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we call for a vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, next is public hearing, item 5B.
Item 5B is introduction and first reading to consider adopting ordinances approving amendment number A 382023A and A 382023B. And I will read those titles. One is an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Garden Grove, approving a zoning tax amendment to Chapter 952 of Title IX of Garden Grove, of the Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to retail sale by delivery of medicinal cannabis. And an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, approving amendment number A 382023B, a zoning tax amendment to portions of chapters 98, 912, 916, and 918 of Title IX of the City of Garden Grove Municipal Code, establishing enhanced standards for the screening of mechanical equipment within an exterior equipment enclosure in residential zones, clarifying how the maximum permitted hardscape coverage in the front yard setback in residential, commercial, industrial, and open space zones is calculated, and updating the standards for artificial turf in all zones. And Preet is here to give that report.
Mayor and members of City Council, the item before you tonight is a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the City Council to adopt a city-initiated zoning tax amendment to the municipal code. There are two parts to the amendment. The, to allow retail sale deliveries of medicinal cannabis, as required by state law, referred to under letter A, and amending development standards for mechanical equipment, front yard hardscape coverage, and substitute landscaping referred to as letter B. We will start with the first one, letter A, for medicinal cannabis. The city has prohibited all commercial cannabis activities starting in 2016, which is the same year that recreational use of marijuana was approved by California voters. In 2022, Senate Bill 1186, known as the Medicinal Cannabis Patient's Right of Access Act, was passed. This law prohibits local jurisdictions from adopting or enforcing any regulation that prohibits the retail sale by delivery of medicinal cannabis to medicinal cannabis patients or their primary caregivers by licensed businesses. SB 1186 permits local jurisdictions to adopt and enforce reasonable regulations on medicinal cannabis delivery sales. To respond to SB 1186, the city is proposing to, proposing an ordinance to permit the retail sale by delivery of medicinal cannabis in the city, as required by state law, while also establishing reasonable regulations to protect the public. The amendment would specifically allow, I'm sorry, the summary of the regulations are shown on this slide and the following slide. Just to briefly go through them, these regulations only allow delivery of medicinal cannabis to medicinal cannabis patients or their primary caregivers by a medicinal cannabis delivery business that is located outside of the city. In addition, these businesses will need to obtain and maintain a city business license, maintain state licenses and all other associated permits required by jurisdictions in which the business is located, comply with the Department of Cannabis Control regulations. The businesses shall not deliver recreational cannabis accessories or any other branded merchandise. The business shall directly employ and maintain a list of all deliverers and maintain a list of all delivery vehicles. The deliverers specifically will need to carry a copy of business license and any required state licenses or certificates, delivery ledgers, delivery receipts, and a log of all stops. The deliverers shall not carry products in excess of $5,000, and deliverers shall only deliver to individuals of 18 years or older, and check for valid physician's recommendations and a government-issued ID. Moving on to letter B of this code amendment, the changes are proposed to various code sections related to mechanical equipment, hardscape coverage in front setbacks, and substitute landscaping to make the code easier to understand and enforce. Regarding mechanical equipment, the proposed amendment would specifically allow for exterior equipment enclosures on single-family residences, as required by manufacturer specifications. These enclosures would not be visible from the street and would be required to be painted to match the color of the house. This amendment would also clarify front yard hardscape calculations. With the proposed amendment, the code would now specify the size of standard driveways and clarify that driveways are exempt from the maximum front yard hardscape calculations on single-family properties. The code would continue to allow 50% of the front yard to be hardscaped. And then currently, the use of artificial turf as a substitute landscaping material is implemented with similar regulations across all zones in the city. The proposed amendment will add language to further guide the installation and maintenance of artificial turf in all zones, ensure proper installation and maintenance. This would ideally mimic the look and feel of live grass. Collectively, staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the following actions, I'm sorry, City Council, the City Council take the following actions. Conduct a public hearing, introduce and conduct the first reading of an ordinance approving amendment number A dash 038 dash 2023A, and introduce and conduct the first reading of an ordinance approving amendment number A dash 038 dash 2023B. This concludes staff's report, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions, comments, clarifying questions?
Yeah, I know back when medical marijuana first got its foot in the door, say, to speak, and became a, an issue, and I know the state had like a 90% increase in 15-year-olds with glaucoma after that passed. I don't know that it, now that, now that cannabis has become a legal option, I don't know that too many people are even using it medically anymore, not to the degree it got to back then. So I don't know if it's that, but I know we're basically tailoring our ordinances to mimic what the federal government has already decreed, and, and so we don't want to step on any toes, basically. So I'm pretty supportive of, of that. And this doesn't legalize cannabis in Garden Grove. It's not, we're not going to be having dispensaries on every corner. I got a couple of emails, people were kind of concerned. You know, it's not that. So I just want to make that really clear. That is not what we're talking about here tonight. And the other things are minor issues like, you know, not putting gra, the artificial grass over cement and that kind of stuff, you know, fencing off things so it's not unsightly and that kind of thing. So with that, I'd be supportive of this. It's a public hearing, though, right?
Right. So just any other clarifying questions of staff before we have? Okay, well, go ahead and, okay, go ahead, Joe.
I know that part of the, what are we going to write into the ordinance is some reasonable regulations, and you're comfortable that we have enough regulations to protect our residents. For example, what I mean is, can we limit the hours of delivery? And whether they need to put decals or logos on their vehicles so the neighbor know that they're a legitimate delivery service? And whether they can deliver or limit it to certain areas, because we don't allow them to open within like 1,000 feet or 500 feet of a school or a church, but we allow delivery within certain areas like that, and if that's part of the state law, that we must allow them to do that. Thanks, Preet.
Yeah, I, I can answer most of those questions. So state law already has regulations that limits the amount of items that they can carry, the, the routes that they need to take. There has to be direct routes from, from the business directly to the customer, and then from customer to customer. State law actually prohibits decals on the vehicles. Part of it is a security issue, because I think everyone knows, known dispensaries get vulgarized all the time, and so state law prohibits decal on these vehicles. Otherwise, it'll be a crime scene running all around your city. And the reason we're doing this amendment is because state law actually prohibits cities from prohibiting delivery. So what we're doing is, we are amending our ordinance to allow the delivery, because currently we have an absolute prohibition, with conditions. The two major conditions that are different from what state law requires is, number one, they need a business license, so at least we know which businesses are operating in the city. And number two, we, we are expanding one of the state regulations that says that they cannot deliver to publicly-owned lands. We are including schools, daycares, and not just public schools, we're also covering private schools, kinder through high school. So we are going a little bit beyond state law, but we cannot, like Councilmember Wright again, Mayor Lieutenant Brannigan said, we cannot really step over the toes of the state of California, so we're doing the most we can with what we have.
Given all that, I want our police department to weigh in. Will this burden our policing? Will it increase the need for policing? And will the application process to get license include a background check, so our police department knows who's out there, who's legit and who's not?
Okay, so the, so I'll answer the questions with two pieces of information. Number one, when we're looking at this ordinance, we had a team that included the police department. In fact, a number one member of the team is actually standing there, not to put him on the spot. And number two, the, the business licensing requires that they meet the state requirements, and the state requirement is that you cannot deliver if you're not licensed by the state of California. And the state of California does have regulations that do the background check and, and do all that type of regulation already.
Chief O'Farrell, do you care to weigh in on that?
On the recreational marijuana, I mean, that's, my only main concern with that is youth access to it, but it's a reality in California and something that we have it under control.
One last question, since the chief is here. Will they be allowed to deliver to hotels and rentals?
The answer to that is yes.
Will that involve extra policing on our force?
Not at our level.
Thank you, sir.
I know during agenda review, I brought it up, and, and, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm supportive of this. I don't think it really burdens too much, and it does clarify things between the state and, and the local government. My only concern is a signature type of system. You know, they're, they're coming to deliver medical-grade cannabis to a patient who needs it, medicine. Generally, when any other type of prescriptions are delivered to the home, opioids or any other kind of drugs that might be an issue, it requires a signature. So the person who's delivering it is delivering it to the person who's intended to get it, not just, you know, somebody who happens to be at the house. Does this ordinance provide for that type of a level of transparency, you know, to obtain a signature for, for, you know? So that's a question.
Yeah, so currently, state law does not allow for that. What it does say is that the delivery person needs to do two things, no, actually, three things. Number one, check ID to make sure that the person that's receiving the medical, and this is only for medical marijuana, we're not allowing recreational, so it's only medical. So they need to check, number one, that they have the doctor's recommendation, because it cannot be a prescription, right? Number two, that the person is the person that is listed in the recommendation, the doctor recommendation, and they're supposed to take the first name of the customer, but not the full last name nor signatures. So that's the only thing the state law requires. So that's the only thing the state law requires, and frankly, I'm not sure that the city could require it, you know, if the state doesn't require it. I think what the state is thinking is that this is a medical condition, right? The signature that you see in prescription is really required by insurance companies, not by the government, for payment purposes, and so that's the most we can do.
One last follow-up.
Will we be out of line with the state regulation if we provide the list of the businesses and the deliveries drivers to our police force, if that is something we will do?
Yes, we actually have access to that already. The state has a database where we can identify the licensed providers, and that's actually information we got in order to be able to develop this ordinance, because one of the requirements is that there be enough businesses to deliver sufficient medicine to patients who need it at the quantity that they need it. And if there wasn't sufficient of businesses around the city, then we needed to also permit the establishment of, you know, warehouse or location for where they can deliver from the city. But one of the findings in the ordinance that you will be making is that there are sufficient Sennaana, Costa Mesa, that can actually serve the patients in the city of Garden Grove.
Thank you. Public hearing, I don't know if anyone wishing to speak on 5B. Okay, same then, we will close the public hearing. Colleagues?
You want to vote?
Yeah. I just will make a comment regarding it. It wasn't really a question. The thing that I wanted to stress to everybody out there, this is an ordinance regarding medicinal, medical marijuana deliveries that's required, state legislation has passed, kind of made us local folks, I feel a little bit like a drug dealer, but, you know, I know there are people that really need it for medicinal purposes, and I hope that this is what gets out to those folks. I just hope it doesn't turn into, you know, I already have constituents that contact me, hey, I think my neighbors, you know, there's people coming and going and deliveries and drugs and this and all that, you know, as long as they're not breaking the law in plain sight and doing all those things, you know, there's nothing we can really do about it. I just hope this doesn't make it worse. I hope it does what it's intended to do. And what I wanted to point out was SB 1186 says right here, permits local jurisdictions, us, to adopt and enforce reasonable regulations, that's what we're doing right now, on retail sale by delivery of medical medicinal cannabis, and does not limit or otherwise affect the ability of the local jurisdiction to adopt and enforce the regulations on commercial cannabis operations other than retail sale by delivery of medical cannabis in local jurisdictions. So basically, just wanted to reiterate, this is for medical marijuana delivery required in state Senate Bill 1186 that we're adopting, and I believe this is also, this motion will also be for the other item, which was the code enforcement zoning. These are in one motion, right? So I'll make that motion to pass the staff recommendation.
Motion.
Okay. You already got the motion.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Commission Committee Matters, Item 6A, Measure O.
Item 6A is to receive and file the Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report for fiscal year 2022-23. And Chair Thompson is here to give that, I'm sorry, Chair Thomas is here to give that report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's good to be back. Well, as you know, the Oversight Committee was established in February 26, 2019, for the, to ensure the funds that collected of the 1% sales tax increase was to go towards city public safety and vital services. And the Citizens Oversight Committee has been tasked to ensure two things. One, does the current audited financial information reflect that the Measure O public safety and vital services tax was collected and appropriately spent? And number two, does the city proposed general fund annual budget and CIP plan protect and maintain the city core services, including public safety? We've had two meetings, and the first meeting was October 19, 2022, and our Finance Director, Patricia Song, presented to the committee to review the draft Measure O annual report for fiscal year 2021-22. The committee also reviewed fiscal year 2021-22 unaudited general fund financial data. And we reviewed the amended fiscal year 2022-23 biannual budget for the general fund, and we also discussed the impact of federal interest rate hike to the city, the operating costs and funding sources for the navigation center, and the public safety spending in relation to the overall general fund operating budget. Our other meeting was March 6 of 2023, and we went over some housekeeping. We reviewed the Chapter 2.02 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code on Code of Ethics for Public Officers and Employees. We reviewed the fiscal 2021-2022 audited general fund financial information and the fiscal year 2022-23 mid-year general fund financial performance, and discussed other matters, including the progress of the Central City's Navigation Center and the development of the major hotel projects, and the potential environment impact of the construction of the public safety facility. We also, the staff presented to the committee the fiscal 2021-2022 audited revenue and expenditures of the city's general fund. The general fund, as presented to the city's annual comprehensive financial report, does include the city's main operating fund, Economic Development Fund, Tourism Improvement District Fund, Land Sale Proceeds, and Deposit Fund. So in your report on Table 1, it summarizes the city's overall general fund revenues, and in fiscal year 2021-22, the city received approximately $28.9 million from the 1-cent sales tax from Measure O, which was an increase of $5.6 million from the prior fiscal year. The total general fund expenditures for the same fiscal year was $134 million, of which almost 71% was for public safety, which meets or exceeds the Measure O goals. Comparing that to the fiscal year, previous fiscal year, expenditures on the police safety increased by $2.4 million. And then you see in Table 2 on your report, it summarizes the city's general fund audited expenditures for 2021-2022. So in summary, our question is, does the current audited financial information reflect that the Measure O public safety and vital services, vital city services tax, was it collected and appropriately spent? Yes. The committee's conclusion, the committee reviewed the financials, which were determined to be reported properly and were approved by unanimous vote. Also, we looked at the amended general fund budget for 2022-23, and the amended revenue showed a total increase of $11.4 million from the adopted budget. And that's mainly due because of the sales tax increase, sales tax exceeded the pre-pandemic levels, and even though there was slower economy due to higher inflation, however, it does provide for additional tax collected related to higher prices. Measure O was expected to bring in $27.1 million to the city for the year, and property tax also had an upward adjustment of $2.7 million due to the real estate market. Transient occupancy tax was amended to be 85% of the city's pre-pandemic peak. The operating budget for the general fund increased by $6.2 million in the amended budget to cover the 7% inflation adjustment, as well as some mandated costs. Public safety occupied 70.8% of total amended general fund's operating budget. Appropriations increased $17.4 million, of which $7 million was designated for the acquisition of the navigation center, and $8.3 million for public facilities projects, specifically the police headquarters and civic center. The committee's conclusion was, the committee reviewed the financials, which were determined to be reported properly and were approved by unanimous vote. And finally, the committee's recommendation to staff is to continue, review the fiscal year 2022-23 audited financial information, and report on Measure O tax revenue collected at the expenditures and the expenditures for public safety and other vital services. Revenue, general fund operating budget allocations, and update the committee as needed on fiscal year 2023-2024 general fund revenue and expenditures, to ensure that the appropriate and transparent financial system is in place, and to account for the funds generated by the Measure O tax. And we also, as a committee, want to thank Patricia and the staff for wonderful presentations and up-to-date information. They do a fantastic job. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Sandy. Colleagues, questions, comments?
Thank you. Thank you for all that.
They did a lot of work.
See them filed.
Motion received and filed.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you for your service. Should we keep going? Anybody want to break, or should we keep going? Good? Okay, items. Items for consideration, we have four listed, so we'll go to 7A.
Item 7A is authorization of the issuance of a purchase order to PB Loader for one new police department command post.
Thank you, Ms. Palmroy. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, City Council is being asked to purchase one new police department command post vehicle from PB Loader Corporation through the Sourcewell Competitive Bid Program. Public Force Department has one police department command post vehicle that currently meets the city's guidelines for replacement. Based on the results of a recent Sourcewell Competitive Bid Program, PB Loader Corporation is the lowest responsible bid with a cost of almost $1.2 million. There is no impact to the general fund, and this purchase was approved in the budget. Should the council decide to authorize the purchase tonight, we can expect to take delivery of the command post in about 18 months. The current command post will be returned to the state per the conditions of the grant used to purchase the older vehicle in the first place. This concludes staff's report. If you're available, should you have any questions?
Thank you, Bill. Any questions?
Counselman O'Neill wants to buy the old one, so he can put it in front of his house.
Have to talk to the state.
All right, we have a motion, a second, call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
7B.
Item 7B is adoption of a resolution authorizing the submittal of an application to the Orange County Transportation Authority for the construction phase of the Harbor-Garden-Grove intersection improvement project. And again, Mr. Murray is here to give that report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmroy. Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, City Council is being asked to adopt a resolution authorizing a grant application for the Harbor-Garden-Grove intersection improvement project. The grant is for construction funding via the Comprehensive Transportation Funding Program, which is managed by the Orange County Transportation Authority. The city is requesting a little more than $3.7 million in grant funding, and will have to match almost $2 million of local gas tax funds. The total project will cost, you know, $5.7 million. Currently, the intersection is constructed using lane rents that are substandard, that are 10-foot in width. This is very noticeable as you pass in front of the Shell Station on the westbound lanes. This project would widen the intersection to accommodate standard lane rents of 12 feet. The project would also add a right turn lane going eastbound in front of the Carl's Juniors, and add basically dual lefts going northbound on Harbor. This project will include, the big component will be the new signal poles with the very long mast arms to accommodate the widenings. The resolution is attached to your staff report for your review, and should council decide to authorize the grant application, we should find out if we were successful in about six months. At the time, at that time, we'll go ahead and finalize our construction plans and specifications and put the project out to a competitive bid, and return those bids to council for your consideration. This concludes staff's report. If you're available, should you have any questions?
Thanks, Bill. Colleagues? Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes. Item 7C is adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to take actions necessary to finance the public safety facility and civic center revitalization project through the issuance of debt by the Garden Grove Public Financing Authority. This was a joint action, I believe.
Yeah, and you're ready to receive the report, so it's just a matter of taking action.
Right. We don't need another copy of the report. So colleagues, motion, second?
I'll make the motion.
All right, call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes. Item 7D is an introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending the municipal code pertaining to the regulation of the sale of tobacco products. That ordinance is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Amending Chapter 644 of Title VI of the Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to Regulation of the Sale of Tobacco Products." And City Attorney Sandoval is here to give that report.
Members of the City Council, the ordinance before you will amend our code to updated pursuant to state law, and the two major changes are, number one, it would prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products. It does have two exceptions. One is for what the law calls premium cigars, I don't know what those are, but, and the second one is tobacco for licensed hookah parlors. And then the second major item is that we are amending the definition of tobacco retailer to include vending machine sales. Our current regulations don't cover vending machines, and with this ordinance, we'll cover those as well. A third, more minor, well, actually, for some people maybe major, is that currently our code says that you can sell tobacco for individuals 18 years or younger, and our ordinance is going to change the code to say that you cannot sell tobacco to any 121. Those are the three major changes that we're doing, and is to assist our code enforcement officers to enforce regulations locally as opposed to having PD enforce the state law. So that's really the reason why we're bringing this up, is because code enforcement, we would like to have administrative citation authority, not just through the DA's office. If I can answer any questions you may have, if not, the recommendation is to adopt, not adopt, but pass it to a second reading.
Just a quick question. The new ordinance, would that cover all flavored vape fluids?
Yes.
Or just the flavored vape fluids that contain nicotine? Because I know some of them nowadays have Tylenol and other medicinal things instead of the nicotine. So I'm curious, is that going to affect all of that, or is it just specifically the nicotine vape fluids?
Well, it would have, well, it prohibits, it's specifically to flavored tobacco products where, so it's limited to tobacco, but it includes any liquid that would add flavor to the tobacco. We have separate regulations that prohibit vaping at certain locations, again, per state law, within 25 feet of entrance of a building, in schools, in parks, but generally, that's the most we can do under state law.
But none of these fluids contain tobacco. That's not put in the fluids.
Right.
It's, they contain added chemicals, you know, like nicotine.
Yes.
They don't put tobacco in them, so it seems to me like that really wouldn't pertain if the ordinance is specific to fluids that contain tobacco. if the ordinance is specific to fluids that contain tobacco.
Right, right. So this one is simply and specifically for tobacco products, or tobacco regulations.
So it's doing nothing effectively? We're doing nothing?
If the council wants to...
No fluids have tobacco in them, but they have nicotine in them, not tobacco.
Yeah.
You couldn't get the leaf in there to vape it. I'm thinking maybe we need to rethink the wording of this thing.
Well, or it would be a separate regulation that deals with the different items that you are identifying.
But currently, there's no products on the U.S. market that contain, that are vape fluids that contain tobacco. That's what I'm trying to say. They're separate. There's no tobacco in the fluid. It's other liquids in the fluid. It's, and they put nicotine in it to make it addictive. And, you know, so my question is, this ordinance appears to do absolutely nothing, because there's nothing to enforce that that covers.
Well, it's defined, we're defining tobacco product as regulated in state law, and it would be Health and Safety Code, Section 104495.
I was looking at B right now, and it says, "An electronic device that delivers nicotine or other vaporized liquids to..."
So not tobacco, nicotine.
That's what I'm reading right here.
I think it's kind of more broad definition under the law.
Maybe there are interchanging words here and there, but I, this one item says nicotine.
Right.
If that helps.
Motion? Stephanie Kim, call the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes, with Mayor Proton Bradigam abstaining.
All right, takes us on to ordinances presented for second reading and adoption, 8A.
Item 8A is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2944, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Adopting the Garden Grove Police Department Military Equipment Use Policy pursuant to Government Code 7071 and rescinding ordinance number 2935."
Okay. This is just a second reading?
This was considered at your last meeting.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, that takes us on to matters, and we do have one item listed, which is 9A, an update on civic center revitalization project.
Your honorable mayor, members of the city council, we have our civic center revitalization team that will be joining us shortly to give the council an overview of work that's progressed to date and some preliminary overview of some schematics for some additional feedback from the council.
We have a presentation that we want to share with you this evening. I think if you can get that to Christina. Thank you, Omar. Do I have to do this? Isn't it this one? There we go. How's that? Okay. Good evening, mayor, members of council. This evening, we would like to give you a project update on the civic center revitalization project. Tonight, we want to just review a few things. We want to introduce the development team to you. I think last time we were before you, we asked for approval of an ENA. We've since signed that ENA, and we have a whole development team involved with the design. We're going to go through the design update and share some massing studies and some visioning, and then talk a little bit about our community engagement and the SEQA process. So hopefully, this looks familiar. We've completed Phase 1, Phase 2, and are now in Phase 3 of the development of this project. Phase 3 included the launch of the RFQ, which we have completed, and the selection of the development team, which is here this evening. And so what I would like to do is introduce Brian Dugan of Edgemore, and he's going to walk through the slide deck for you. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor Jones, members of the council. Thank you for having us. I will do an introduction of the team, and then my colleague here, Christina Solomon, she will take you through a technical, design, and construction update, and then we'll hand it back to Craig, who will wrap up with SEQA and outreach update. So introducing our team, on the screen here, you can see Edgemore. We are the lead developer overseeing the team. We've also put some headshots on here, so you can see some faces behind the firms. Clark is our design builder for the project. Mark is here representing Clark. AC Martin is our lead designer. Tammy's here representing AC Martin. And then we've got several design consultants working underneath AC Martin. We have Roth Shepherd Architects. They are our law enforcement designer. They're really the firm responsible for making sure that the police facility operates efficiently and serves the needs of the police department here. We've got HK LA as our landscape architect. Hong Ju is here, representing HK LA. They're really focusing on the park, you know, making sure that we get the park right, which we know is a big deal to you all and a big deal to the public. Rick Engineering is our civil engineer. Bueller is our structural engineer. Glumac is MEP, and Balesa is our lighting designer. And then also, on the left-hand side here, you can see some of the consultants directly to the developer team. So we've got Orc as our sponsors council, Alliance, our financial advisor, M consensus is working with us on community outreach, working closely with the city's team on that as well. And then Altera is our commissioning agent that we were involving early to make sure that they're weighing in on the design as well. So you can go to the next slide. This is how we're organized to execute the project, so really five primary working groups. We have the technical working group, which is really design and construction. We have an entitlements permitting and engagement working group, working on making sure that the SEQA process is complete, we get all the permits for the project, and the outreach and engagement builds the community support that the project wants to have and has to date so far. Project financing, making sure that we efficiently finance the project. Commercial and legal, that's the working group, working now towards the commercial terms in the project agreement. And then finally, building commissioning. So we're thinking about today, how does this building operate for the next, you know, several generations or several decades upfront? So with that, I'll turn it over to Christina, who will take you through design update.
Thank you, Brian. Mayor Jones, members of the council, good evening. I'm really excited to walk you through what we've been working on for approximately six weeks on this project. It's been really exciting to start putting some work on this beautiful civic center project. So what we wanted to do, though, to start the design process, was really think through the design principles and what our goals are as part of this design. So we understand the scope. There's a police building, a parking garage, and a park. But what does that mean from a design perspective? Really, what we've been looking at, some of these key principles are operational efficiency. So how does the police work throughout the building to make it as efficient as possible? How can we make sure that the building is maintainable? How do we look at, how this building fits within this beautiful campus and how we can make this area feel more like a campus? And then also, in terms of the architecture of the building, how do we create that statement building, really on the corner of Acacia and Euclid? The goal is that if we are able to meet all of these principles, that really the byproduct are these outcomes that we're really looking for. Connected community, increased productivity, retention and recruitment benefits for the PD, and then long-term affordability of the building. So you can see, this is the site that we're looking at and where it sits, and this is the area that we're looking at. However, we do understand that it's part of a larger campus. So a lot of the decisions that we've been making have been in service to this larger campus area. You can see, we understand that south of Acacia, there's City Hall and other city buildings. So we're really focusing on what that pedestrian path wants to be from City Hall across Acacia. We also understand that there's a police building, or sorry, a high school on Stanford. So what we've really focused on is trying to mitigate any sort of traffic impacts by making sure all of our entries and exits to the site are off of Acacia. So we've really been considering how this site ties into everything as we've been going through design. So what we started with was really massing studies. How do we take this program and fit it on the site? You can see, we did a bunch of different massing studies, and we realized that one of the key decisions we needed to make early on was around the parking structure. Do we think this is going to be a two-bay parking structure or a three-bay parking structure? They each have pros and cons. To talk a little bit more about that, we explored, as I mentioned, a two-bay and a three-bay. And you can see on the left, the two-bay structure, there's a difference in how much site it takes up, and then on the, how much of the site it takes up, what we can use for usable space on-site. On the right, you can see the three-bay structure really eats up a lot of the site. So it became really challenging to understand how we could get services throughout the site, and that has really led us to lean towards a two-bay parking structure. One of the benefits of the three-bay parking structure was the height. So that's one of the things we're looking to try to mitigate on the two-bay parking structure. It is taller than the three-bay. But from a site perspective and from a logistics, from logistics, it really makes the most sense. So we took that approach, and then we looked at two key layouts for how we could lay out the building in association with the parking structure. You see, layout one, the building is parallel to Euclid, and in option number two, the building is perpendicular to Acacia. So these are really the two options that we've been exploring more deeply in how we want to lay out this site. And then I'll talk a little bit more about architecturally what that means as well. And then I just wanted to remind, or bring back the point that we're really focusing on is how do we tie into this whole site? So yes, we're looking at the buildings and the park, but then how does that tie into what's existing? How does that make everything make sense between the library and the community center, making sure it all fits together? That's really been a focus of ours. And then we can dig a little deeper into the more, looking more at the architectural concepts. So this is concept number one, again, kinked to be parallel to Euclid. And some of the features of this are the two-bay parking structure, the three-story public safety facility, parallel to Euclid. This yellow oval in the middle, that's a memorial plaza where we foresee bringing the police memorial in to create a really beautiful gesture to the police department to honor the heroes past and present. Safe, accessible drop-offs for a ride chair. You can see that curve cutout sort of right in front of that oval. And then a welcoming entrance to the green corridor, which is what we're calling the area between the police building and the library. So really focusing on how do you, how do you make that a welcoming entrance? So this is concept one that we've been exploring. And then concept number two is more orthogonal, and it has, from an entry perspective, it looks at stairs and ramps versus more of a grade up to the entrance, and still looking at that memorial plaza in the middle, safe drop-offs. But really, the difference here is how we enter into the building. This is a little bit elevated with steps and ramps, and the other is more of a grade up. Now, as we've been exploring this, we can, we're looking at both the orientation of the building and some of these architectural components. They're, at this point, it's all pick and choose. We can take things that we like from option one, put them on option two, et cetera. So these are really the explorations that we've been doing over the past couple weeks. Bless you. We've also been starting to look at facades. So here's some precedent imagery of some of the facades that we're looking at, really thinking about how we can mix materials. How can we mix concrete or plaster and carton wall to make a really beautiful and safe statement for the PD? So these are some really great examples of buildings that have done that. And to see how these could lay onto our building, we have a couple renderings as well. So this would be an example of a, something that leads more towards the curtain wall that lays onto option, our concept number one. Again, everything is interchangeable. And then we're also exploring if we could go further into a precast type of exploration, what that could look like as well. These are all things that we're studying at the moment to figure out the right facade. And then in terms of the park, as I mentioned, we really are trying to focus on how everything ties together. So you can see from these images, that pink, that pink areas right along Acacia, we're really thinking about how we can create this promenade down Acacia that creates a great pedestrian experience and ties the whole development together. Really, right now, we've been focusing on a high level, again, trying to make sure everything works. But as we get a little bit further along, we're really going to start taking more work around the programming of the park. We've gotten a lot of great feedback from the community on what the community is looking for from the park, and we've heard that feedback. So the next step will be us taking that feedback and then putting into a design what, how that comes to fruition. So that's where we are on the design. And so with that, I will pass it back to Craig.
Oh, yes.
I see you have a very solid team of engineers, but I don't see any audio engineering. Is it not involved?
We have not brought in an audio engineer at this point. We do have acousticians available. We'll be working through acousticians. We have a lighting designer on the team already, but we don't have an audio designer onboard at this moment.
Do you anticipate bringing one on?
I'll let our architect answer.
Yes. Audiovisual, yes. And we also have, is that your specific question?
Yes.
Yes, S2N is the company that our partners like to work with.
Okay. It wasn't on the slide that you showed, but we anticipate bringing in audio engineering.
That's correct. So S2N would take care of low voltage disciplines, including audiovisual, data, and security.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so just real quick, I wanted to bring everyone up to speed on what we've been doing for community engagement. The community engagement process continues. We've had over 1,950 engagements with residents at different pop-up events throughout the city. A lot of summer events, you've probably seen the staff at, staff booths set up at the different events in their parks, concerts in the parks, movies in the parks. We've also received comment cards about the park and amenities in the park, as Christina brought up. We will be at the two upcoming events, the tree lighting event on the second, and then there will be an open house on the sixth. Open house will share the most latest information, the information that we're sharing you this evening. Again, this design process is continuing, and so even though we're at this point tonight, in two weeks, the design will even be more evolved. So we're really looking forward to share, sharing with the community the most up-to-date information that we have. Also, for SEQA process, the SEQA document is available for public review. So the draft document is out for public comment. We'll receive those comments back. We'll address the comments that are received in the document. And then the final document will be brought forward to the planning commission. That's anticipated by the end of the year. So that's a quick update on the community component, and we're available for questions or any feedback that you might want to share. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, you know what? I want to say just, you know, thank you guys for all the work you put into this. And I know you gave us, I'm sorry, this thing's, there we go. And I know you guys gave us all individual briefings on Zoom, and so it was really good to see those slides and not need three pairs of glasses to see them on this phone screen. And, you know, so I just want to thank you for all your hard work you've gone in, and the work to come. You know, there's going to be a lot to come, and really excited to get this going. This community has been talking about this for over 20 years. So to see it really progressing and seeing it on paper, it's kind of cool. So thank you for all your...
Thank you, and we can tell you, we speak for the team. You know, we're honored to have the opportunity to develop this project, and we feel like we have a fantastic team. Your team has been fantastic to work with. We're just getting started, but we're really excited. We've got a great chemistry with Lisa and Craig, with the chief and his team, and our team is doing a fantastic job. Lot of work being done really fast, but we've got the right team to do it. And as you saw from the intro slide, we've got a deep bench working on the project.
Thank you. Yeah, mostly just comments. I think we're all very excited about this project, as I think the community is as well. It's a historic project for our civic center, our downtown, and for our entire city. And I really appreciate, we have so many families and residents that live around the Civic Center Park area that have been here all their lives, that would be me included. And I think just to be able to have the outreach to the community, allow them to have those touch points, that engagement, be able to leave their comment cards, their questions, makes people, I think, feel just that they have a say and just some, just a part of this project, and I think that's so important. So I really appreciate that, the time and the dedication in making sure that the residents feel heard. feel heard and feel like they're a part of this, I think is really helpful and I appreciate it greatly. It's a robust team. Everything is moving along so quickly. It's very exciting and thank you for your presentation this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Just a quick note. So Stephanie actually talked about some of the things I want to mention about outreach to the community because every one in a while, we're going to, we hear community or residents said, oh, why can't we have this at the park? Well, this is the perfect time for them to get a feedback to our team and so we can look at that. One quick thing, when we talk about the two design, last time, we did mention a little bit about that we kind of leaned to the first design, the two tier, whatever, but the parking was so high, I don't want that to oversaddle the building. So hopefully that the team will take a look, maybe other option, maybe go underground or, I don't know, but I hope that that's something that you consider because seemed like when we talked, everyone liked the first design, but that one will give the, the parking so high and it will saddling the other building and we don't want that. So that was just a quick note. Thank you.
It's a very timely comment. We're, we're working on some options for that right now.
Quick comment, one of the main things I'm hearing is those darn ducks. People that live around here and Stephanie, they all talk about remembering coming over here and feeding the ducks at the park. So, you know, we got to make sure that wherever we relocate, we got to make sure those ducks, ducks are properly adopted and, and.
Does that mean you're going to take them? Can we take them to George's house?
I have no room for ducks.
Just, just wondering.
Maybe a chicken. Save the ducks.
They've gotten pretty aggressive. They do, they attack people all the time too.
An office has ducks and mice.
They're not cute anymore.
Get goosebumps by a duck.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to touch upon community engagement. I know there are several, I mean, for me, that number is still pretty low. I'm not very happy with it and I think I make that comment almost anytime we ever do a survey for any of the city projects. And so just wondering if we've thought about as staff, if we haven't already, reaching out to library staff, Garden Grove High School, having a special meeting on Main Street for the specific business owners? Have we considered attending a Garden Grove Unified School District Board meeting to present what we're working on? More so so that parents are aware and sharing that information because it's another touch point to a lot of people that are viewing those meetings or attending those meetings. I think that that's something that we should look into if we haven't already. And then I know we have, you know, some amazing officers that attend football games or whatever other games the schools are having. That's an opportunity to have a liaison out there to kind of just share information to really boost that number because again, my main concern is that it's a small sample and I know that in the grand scheme of things, it's a very good number, but when you're looking at a city this large and a project that's going to be this costly and last, hopefully for a very, very long time, we want to make sure that we're getting the buy-in early and fast. And I know that there's several folks, at least on the east end, that didn't even know we're going through this process, no matter how many times I share the survey or post it on social media or reshare, whatever. You know, folks are clicking really quickly and all taking the time to look at that. So I think we need to be more cognizant about meeting people where they're at, where they're already gathering and making sure that we're reaching them in that way. You know, like we have to be pushy. We can't just like say we did our best and move on. I think we, we can do more.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matters from commissioners going around the horn. Let me start by saying happy birthday to Councilwoman Joan O'Neil. Twenty-nine years old with 29 years' experience. George, anything?
Sure. First of all, yeah, happy birthday, John. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody coming up here. I hope everybody has their fair share of turkey and all the trimmings. You know, we all seem to be doing fairly decent in our city, but there are a lot of folks that could use help. And, you know, when you're enjoying your dinner and maybe think about the food pantry or other things that you might want to donate your food to. And I know Councilwoman Tran is hosting an event here pretty soon. Also, the holiday toy drives are coming up and we do have a lot of children in our community that could benefit from toys. And I know the city of Garden Grove is, is hosting a toy drive and, and those locations are posted on, on the city website and all, I think most of us have shared it on our social media at this point as well. The OCFA has a toy drive going and the Garden Grove Kiwanis have a toy drive going. So there's plenty of opportunities. If you're so inclined and would like to donate and help out the less fortunate in our community, please take advantage of those organizations and entities. And that's about it.
Happy birthday.
Thanks. I was going to mention too about toy drives, being your representative on the Orange County Fire Authority, they do have a toy drive. No one should have any excuse for not donating a toy to any, we have a lot of toy drives going on, so please contribute to that. A little note on OCFA and the loss of the hangar over in the Tustin Air Base. I know it was a great loss to Orange County and any of the veterans that served and came through here, you know, experienced that building. A little update on it, you know, last week, the Fire Authority basically gave command back over to the owner, which is the Navy. The city of Tustin obviously is very involved. OCFA is on standby for flare ups, but they're basically letting it burn out. I think we have this rain that is talking about coming, that should finally put it out, out. But it was really too dangerous to, to try to put it out. I know a lot of people come to me, why don't we put it out, put it out? There's so many facets of what's going on. It's 17 stories tall. It's just too dangerous to have people in there with apparatus when the whole ceiling could collapse. And at this point, you know, then there is a lot of question in theory, there's still investigation going on, but there was no utilities to the building. It was probably caused by humans and whether that was, you know, someone lighting a fire or intentionally or unintentionally. But we're still under investigation on what's going on. But the OCFA is on call whenever there's a flare up, but really it's been turned back over to the owner, which is the Navy, and then obviously the city of Tustin. And on another note, I wanted to just mention a longtime resident of Garden Grove passed away last week, a friend of mine, actually a constituent of district two, Gloria Lumbus. Over 50 years in Garden Grove, I went to school with her son, Chris, at St. Columban's. Very dedicated Catholic and longtime 50-year parishioner of St. Columban. Lived in District Two for over 50 years. Worked at local banks and places here in the community, but really gave back to the community. She survived by her two sons, Chris, who I went to school with, and then Steve, both went to St. Columban. So our thoughts and prayers with the family. She was quite a lady and she'll be missed. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor. From the last meeting tonight, I attend more than 12 events, but I'm going to just highlight a couple of quick ones. So first, I want to shout out to the Chamber of Commerce for having the desire and create your own holiday rest last week. It was just nice to have a couple of minutes, sit down and make your own rest and just build great memory. And so just want to say thank you. Second one, I attend the library advisor board representing our city and they talk about grants. So I asked about our library, the main library here and the little library right near District Three, Gilbert and Chapman. So they said there is grant coming for the main library here and more detail will come. They mentioned about the high school program for adults. So any adult that went to school before and never completed a high school, you would be able to go to library, attend their program and you will be able to earn your high school diploma. It's not the GED, but actually a diploma. Next was due to the recent attack on senior in our city. The group senior fight back, a nonprofit group, is planning to have a seminar. They are working with our city staff right now. They, they will give out free pepper spray and safety alarm. I attended event a couple of months ago in our park right here. They give you, like they teach you how to do kind of muscle art move to get away from the bad guy or fight back when, you know, in the scenario that you have to. Next, I want to say thanks to Chief Amir, Captain Brian Doughton, and Officer Boosie for giving me the ride along. It was just four hour, but the time went so quick. We did the, we, we saw the grant tab, well check on the elder. There was a very young, he probably early 20, he actually hit a pedestrian. So it just kind of reminded, like when we make a turn, typically it was so dark, he couldn't see. So when we make a turn, I have to think like, you know, you have to be a little bit cautious about the people walking in the dark glow. And then there was graffiti at the church, domestic violence. And at the end, at 10:00 PM, there was hundreds of teenager doing a car meet at, in a parking lot. And so our, our policeman came and blocked all the street and it was just some kind of great experience for me, especially for me in the past. Every time I see the police, I always like, I don't like to see them because I don't want them to give me ticket or anything. But this time I felt differently because it was at nighttime and you see that they going around to make sure that our city is safe. I feel like they're like a hero in a Marvel movie or something like that. It just made me feel totally different perspective, especially the officer that I tag along. He came from LAPD and he just love our police department. He loved the people that he worked with and so that just say highly about our police department. And last but not least, but we heard earlier about the Fight Hunger event. I attend the last year even, we make more than 100,000 meals for hunger. So hopefully this year, this is the first time we do it here. So of course, would like to invite everyone here to come and experience. I saw, you know, little kids to grandparents came and just do it together and have fun and also do something good for the community. Happy birthday to you.
That's it.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, yes. I would like to shout out happy birthday to all the November people, including my wife, Deena Nguyen. Thanksgiving is our favorite holiday because we don't have to do anything except celebrate her birthday and a few family members also in November. So a shout out to my wife, Deena Nguyen, happy birthday and happy birthday, John O'Neil.
My dad, my brother are all familiar.
Keep it in the family, yeah. So blessings for everybody. I do appreciate Nick Dips today bringing up, proposing a resolution to pray for peace and healing. I suggest that our staff maybe work on a resolution that we can all adopt and before we go on our holiday break to remember all the pain and hurt that's, I don't want to be politically incorrect, but I think praying for peace and healing for everyone involved and just breaks your heart to watch on the news every night. I had flashbacks of Vietnam back in the Vietnam War when I was a child and I know back in the US, everybody had to watch the Vietnam War on the television every night. It was very painful and that war ended and we came here and became good Americans, hopefully. And we want to not forget people around the world that are, are suffering and we need to pay, pray for the peace and healing. And I also thank one of the speakers, Tina Voh, who mentioned the Fight for Hunger. It's the sixth annual and Cindy was there up in San Jose last year and they came up with a hundred thousand meals donated. So it's a good cause. We're trying to scale down a little bit because it's first year down here and hopefully everybody will participate. And thank you, Councilman George Bradigan also helped with the venue. It's a QD venue. I like that place a lot. If anybody wants to know where it is, it's at the corner of Garden Grove and Beach. Right across the street is Rodeo 39. Wish that was in Garden Grove. But we have QD venue across the street and it's, it's as good a venue as any. Parking lot, very spacious so everybody can come and receive blessings and just some comfort around the holidays. So thank you, Cindy, and your volunteers who came tonight. I appreciate that very much and I volunteer myself too. Hopefully everybody can show up for that. We've had some, in my district, but people in other districts also write to me, email, call me and so on about certain things around the city that needs to be addressed and I'm very thankful that I've been able to lean on staff, especially Sean Park, who's always been there when I ask him to reach out to a constituent and provide the very much needed services. So I want to mention Sean, who's, who's doing a tremendous job. And also Kristi Thai, who's going on in 10 years of providing the liaison services to our Vietnamese-speaking community. And I appreciate her taking my calls, I'm pretty much at any time of the day because people don't pick when they contact you. So we all know that off hours, weekends and so on, and I've been able to rely on Kristi Thai and I want to mention her by name and, and show some appreciation, especially around, she's having some time off with family and that's understandable. We all need to take time with our family, especially around the holiday and then just re-energize and come back and, and serve our city better. One event I went through last week, November 4th, that was the grand opening of the VN Beauty Spa. And that's also in our city, in my district. I'm proud to have them open. They've had several months delay, but our staff has been very, very helpful to help them pass everything and they opened up with a ribbon cutting and I want to congratulate VN Beauty Spa for their grand opening November 4th. And I was there with former councilman Fat Boy. It was good to see him and his wife. And he was there as the, as the community leader. He is the chairman of the Vietnamese-American Federation. So his leadership is still very much felt in this community and I appreciate him showing up and recognizing the contributions of the businesses in and around Garden Grove. And I think he's a, he's a goodwill ambassador if nothing else and I wish him a lot of good health and good, and good luck in his future prospects. And we had a good little talk and I like to mention that former councilman Fat Boy is still very active in our city and, and we appreciate all the things he's done while on council and now out of council, but I don't want people to forget that he did make a lot of contributions when he was here on council. Lastly, there's not much left here, but I want to let the, our residents know that this Civic Center is, is moving along very nicely. We had the team, the project team come in and give us a, an update on everything and hopefully people will take advantage of the opportunity that's created for you to contribute to the design and any features that you think would be helpful for this public space. So it's a partnership between the residents, the city staff and our consultants, as well as the whole council and our mayor to bring it all together. And I, I want to echo what the rest of the council have mentioned, that is, we are very pleased that we're making good progress on it and we'll have more good news to report to you in the near future. So thank you.
Thank you. Earlier this evening, my, some of my council colleagues and I were on Main Street. We had the good fortune of honoring the really legacy and the business of the Zlakic family. A plaque was placed where their business was for so many years, not only just their dedication to their small business, but how it really just became their home and such a legacy for their family on Main Street. It was just a wonderful opportunity, I think, to, to showcase the beautiful spirit of our community and how much the Zlakic family meant to Garden Grove and how much Garden Grove meant to the Zlakics family. So it was wonderful to be there and see so many familiar faces, people coming out, old and new, past and present from our city, and just really shows how Main Street's still the heartbeat of our city. So it was wonderful to be there. That's all I have. Thank you.
First, happy birthday, John.
Early birthday, I think. Second, I attended the Woodbury Park rehabilitation meeting last, I think it was last week or the week before, I can't remember anymore, but there was a really good turnout. Unfortunately, we had a lot of grumpy residents talking about a lot of the issues that they saw. While we know that there are issues and we want to work to solve them, I encourage them to really take the time to envision the future and plan ahead. So I hope that when I left that they, they were able to do that. Wanted to make sure to jump in and give staff a lot of kudos for the work that they did because it's taken years for us to get grant funding for that park. So just want to acknowledge that team. And then the other one is, most of my colleagues can attest to the fact that I've been. And then the other one is, most of my colleagues can attest to the fact that I've been a true champion for mental health and homelessness services, and really wanting to do the best that we can to address these issues in the city. But I will say, as of late, I've just become more and more disheartened and frustrated. We've had a, a number of crime-related issues, and one more specifically, a very heinous crime involving a young student. And so it's becoming more and more frustrating. I, I'm sure that Garden Grove Police Department also feels that, and I'm getting a lot more complaints and concerns from residents in the specific area of Harbor and Trask, Harbor all the way down to Westminster and all the way up to Garden Grove Boulevard specifically, the gas station by the Taco Bell, off of Banner, the Denny's, the Bank of America. You know, you can't go anywhere without seeing someone's private parts. I'll get some pictures, and best believe, I send them to City Manager Lisa Kim, because if I have to see it, she best see it, too. And it's, it's wildly inappropriate, it's scary, nerve-wracking, residents no longer feel safe. We have so many students walking from Doig in Santiago to the Taco Bell, to the Denny's, to the gas station after school, and I just don't know how much longer they're going to be able to do that, especially if they're getting attacked in broad daylight. And so I don't want to speak too much on the issue, because I don't know how the semantics pertaining to it, but I know that it was extremely disheartening for me to hear that, and also, as a survivor, just to, to know that someone that young had to do that, and it's in the middle of the day. Luckily, we have amazing people that stopped and, and helped GTPD in their efforts to capture that person, and I would like to request that our Chief of Police bring forward a community spotlight if those individuals are willing to come in, because for something like that to happen during the day, it'll, I think it was around noon, and for people to take action and try to help, I think is astonishing in this day and age. And so I just want to make sure that we're giving folks kudos for that, because you're also putting yourself at risk, and just, you know, expressing the frustration alongside all of our residents in that regard, that we do our best, we, we say a little prayer, but it's getting out of hand, and we acknowledge that, and we know, and unfortunately, there's only so much we can do legally. It's not like we can just round up everybody and arrest people. So I, I don't know what the solution is. I'm right there with you with these frustrations, and I just want to support the Garden Grove Police Department and whatever it is that they need alongside all of our partners, like Be Well, who are helping, you know, combat this issue every single day. Whatever you need at this point, come and ask, because I'm ready to give it to you. This is just, it's devastating to see. It's like the walking dead out here. So that's all for me tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Thank you, Council, for the collective input. I appreciate all the events that have taken place over the last couple weeks and all the celebrations, and it is Thanksgiving, and I am thankful to be leading and overseeing our Garden Grove organization. And as with Thanksgiving, there's also always Black Friday, and it's one of the biggest shopping days of the year, so I just wanted to share with the community the importance of supporting our local businesses. With the end-of-year Buy in Garden Grove campaign, our Black Friday goes big, and for every fifty dollars that's spent in the city of Garden Grove from Black Friday, from November twenty-fourth through Thursday, December fourteenth, shoppers have the opportunity to win a five hundred dollar or a two hundred and fifty dollars or a one-night stay at Great Wolf Lodge, and you are encouraged to submit and, and save your receipts and bring them to the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce offices by December fourteenth. And so for more information, visit the city's website. So thank you so much.
General Counsel, anything to report out or any need for closed session hereafter?
Mayor, we did have two closed session items, and there is no reportable action out of those two items.
Alrighty. Thank you, everyone. We will stand adjourned until next time, so enjoy the rest of your evenings.